Start this workshop session and I would ask you to please call off.
Bartlett?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
Hopkins? Mudd? Odenel?
Here.
Darren Scott?
Here.
Bill Scott?
Here.
Wumpel?
Here.
Ormowski? Williams?
Here.
Mayor Edger?
Here.
Mr. Jerry Beer?
Here.
Thank you. First, under the mayor's report this evening is a presentation by Sandy Heaton. We'll take it to the street. Sandy, do you have any more?
Thank you. So we're back. Third year going. Last year I came and thank you all for coming, or for letting me come and speak with you today. So I've put around the board our little flyers here. So there is a definite need in Jacksonville for food, for our children. And as my grandma said, it took a village to raise a child during the depression, and I say it takes a community to feed a child. Last year we fed sixteen thousand five hundred lunches. It was overwhelming. The first day we had a hundred and sixty-five or so lunches, and by the end of the week it was two twenty-five. And then it just grew. There were three weeks we had four hundred and fifteen. So there is a definite need there. This year we have seven sites. We have Walnut and Bass, Housings, Greenbrier, Northwood, Traderport, Monaco Village, Washington School, and South Jacksonville, the elementary area. So we are just, I'm just letting you all know about it. It's free healthy lunches for children only. We were fortunate. We had three hundred and two volunteers come in the evenings over ten weeks, which was, this community is awesome. I've only been here a few years, and I was just amazed at how many people would come out, ages three to ninety-eight. Dorothy Sack, and she's ninety-eight. And we have three-year-olds that were putting bags in containers. What we do is we prepare the lunches the night before. We put them in containers with us for our site, put them in the refrigerators. The next day our volunteers, we had fifty-two last year, they take them out and take them to the sites and caned out the lunches. Just as simple as that. And so that's, that's our food, that's our food program. And I wanted to let you know we're having a fundraiser and a rotary, new rotary was, we were very grateful they're letting us set up pork chop dinner or lunch on June the first. And we'll have flyers everywhere. And they're gonna be having the caterers go along, which is like woo-hoo. And it's pork chops and chips and a soda for five bucks. So that's pretty cheap. So, and all the money goes to the food program. I've been able to get it all together for the food program. So I wanted to also let you know, we've asked how are we helping the community with referrals? And I'm, we're feeding the kids. So I've got this from the state and it's on Jacksonville, like the places to go in case, you know, they want no legal entry. They wanna know where to get things. And we'll be putting these in once a month, the first week of each month on pink because they won't throw the paper away. Hopefully they'll see it. So that's mainly our food program. We're needing volunteers to help us at lunchtime, help hand out the lunches. You know, and anytime you'd like to come on Tuesday or Wednesday or anytime, please consider coming and helping us. We're at Grace at five-thirty. On Monday through Thursday. And Sundays we're at four, because a lot of our ladies wanna get out to the Concert in the Park. And they would literally drop whatever they were doing to go out to the concert in the park, whether you have it or not. So we're doing it at four o'clock. But if you come down, we get you going. If you come, please wear a hat because those fancy little hairnets are a little expensive. So I'm very tight with the money. I have to be, because we don't know. You know, this, last year, it, first year eighty-seven hundred lunches. Last year sixteen thousand five hundred. We don't know how many this year. We don't know. We don't turn a child away. And our first day is June the tenth, since they go to school into the first part of June. And the ninth is when we start. So please consider coming over and helping, even if just one time. You've got that experience of saying, hey, I helped. And with three hundred, come on, that is pretty awesome. So anyway, I just wanna thank you. If you all have any questions, any questions? It's kinda, everybody kinda knows that. So thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Henry.
Oh, you don't, I'm done. Bye. Yes, thank you.
Okay, next up, under the mayor's report, item number two, but certainly not item number two in our hearts, Mr. Jack Cosner.
Well, I got a clipboard and a prop, so. I can speak in front of three hundred people at a convention, at a convention, but this is worse because I know all of you. I came to the city in July twenty-first of eighteen ninety-nine. I heard there was a job opening on a Friday, and I was over here Monday morning with my resume in the mayor's office at seven-thirty. And Mayor Tendy could just taken over. And luckily Dave Bies was in there. They were discussing what they were gonna do about replacing the guy. Within fifteen minutes, I'd been interviewed and I was on the way. So as that lucked out, the next day was the Fourth of July and eight o'clock on the fifth, I got the job. So good old days, make work pretty quick. I operated for eight years, and then I went on lead maintenance crew with his dad, Ernie. And in two thousand, I became the assistant superintendent. Then in two thousand and one, Dave Bies retired, and then they offered me the superintendent's job, but I didn't want it yet. So Pat Long came from the sewer department, and he was the superintendent. And he was there for five years. And the first thing he asked me, what do we need to do? Because he was basically sewer plant. And I was water and sewer collection. So I said, well, we need to hire a person, and we did that. And then I said, we need to start repairing sewer mains and manholes and replace water mains. And so paid one. And as far as equipment, when I went on the truck with Ernie, we had nothing. We didn't have a backhoe, jackhammer, nothing. You take a three-hour water main job and it turned into an eight-hour ordeal. So we started accumulating equipment, and as of last year, I've got a pretty well-equipped bunch now. And they can do their job. And it really helps on worker comp claims and stuff if you've got the right equipment. Because we used to have to jackhammer the holes out by hand, but now we do it with the Bobcat. So yeah, saves a lot. One claim would probably pay for the back for the Bobcat at this day and age. So I continued to sewer main rehab after Pat left, and I kept replacing water mains. And usually the way we know which ones we wanna replace is we call them hotspots. They're typically the ones that are breaking all the time. So we keep track of all that. And those are the ones that we typically repair or replace. My plan has always been to be, let's take a deep breath here. My plan has always been to be proactive and not reactive. So things were going along pretty good until June eighteenth of two thousand and eleven. My birthday. I didn't even get my birthday cake that year, and everybody else ended up eating it because I wasn't around. And that changed things at that point. We built, needed to build a new plant. So that's what we did. And during that time, we continued to replace water mains. And the projects fund is not just for water main replacement, but it's for like painting the three-million-gallon water tank next year out there. And putting the surge tank in down at Naples that we're still working on. They're gonna do the archaeological dig in a couple of weeks, we think. We've been dealing with that for a year and trying to get it down there. But, and then right cleaning the rainy well and basically big-ticket items. The line item from the project fund is just as important as any other line item, but usually the first one to take a hit when the budget time comes around. And that's in any community. But the other line items, you gotta pay for your chemicals. You gotta pay payroll. All those things you have to pay for, electricity. But typically, the project fund takes a hit because, you know, the water and sewer mains, they're in the ground, they're broken and stuff like that, but you fix them. But, but it's, that's the easiest thing because, you know, if you don't pay for your chemicals, your electricity, well, then you're done. So the five-year plan that we put out, always have, they're not just projects I dreamed up, but they're very important projects for the well-being of the utility. They're just not something, you know, I'd be tickled to death if we didn't have a five-year plan. But we don't live in those days. The infrastructure, what you see, you see, you guys see the streets, sidewalks, curb, gutter, building, bridges, those things you physically see on a day-to-day basis. You know, you can tell when they're crumbling. But the water and sewer mains, everything's hit. So you have to rely on me to, you know, let you know what we need. Okay, I'll get one of the props out. This is a coupon out of the water main at Tendy. As you can see, it's got a white film in it. That's a calcium carbonate coating. We treat the water to put that coating on in there because that helps protect the water from the main. But this is a fifty-year-old main, and that's really looks nice for a fifty-year-old main. But it's a fine line between treating the water where it's corrosive and not corrosive and putting down that calcium carbonate coating. But that's how we, that's what we do. So I guess the other one I'll bring out, this is a hundred-year-old water main piece. It's got a lot of buildup on it, calcium carbonate. Aesthetically, it doesn't look very good, but the water coming through it is perfectly fine because, you know, it's bacteria-free. And this is just line buildup. But this is what a hundred-year-old water main looks like. That's the kind of buildup in it. That's over on hardened. This is, two, two reasons we need to replace water mains. One reason is that, plus structurally, this may look sound, but as soon as that pipe's put in the ground, it's trying to revert back to the original composition when it came out of the soil. So it's losing its strength. Negative and positive ions are going back into the soil all the time. So that's typically why we, we replaced old water mains is because they've lost their strength. And that one is a hundred years old. Can't imagine how much water's been through that thing.
And that's in good shape.
Yeah. Because we haven't had any breaks on that down there, but typically, water mains that were built a hundred years ago are, were better built or made than the newer, than the newer ones. They're like in the fifties or something. But it's at the end of its life. The utility department is the largest and most complex system the city owns. I'm giving you all this information so after I leave, when the budget comes around, things come around, you'll know more about the decision-making. Because typically, when I come up here and ask you for money for a project, I don't go into a lot of the profit, the asset problems of the utility. We talk about that one little project, and then you say yes, and off we go. But I got an analogy here. The water plant is a factory, just like Reynolds and Nestle's. We take in a raw product, lake and well water, and process it, and then the end product is sold to the consumer. The big difference is how that product is distributed. Nestle's and Reynolds have mostly trucking firms to get their product distributed. If a truck or trailer is at the end of its life, is replaced, or if a distributor isn't doing their job, they're replaced. But we sell our finished product through our water mains. There is no other means to do this. And, and the water and sewer mains, they don't have an infinite life. And I'm sure some customers think that, okay, we just spent thirty million dollars on a new plant. Aren't we good to go? You know, because that's like any of you, if I came to where you work, and you tried to explain to me in ten minutes how you do your job, you know, it'd be tough. So I'm, I come up here and try to tell you guys, you know, I've been doing it thirty-five years. And, you know, you guys have been out there, know how complex the system is. But in the last eighteen years since Pat showed up and then he left, we've replaced six miles of water main in the city. There's about a hundred and six miles in the city. But you gotta start somewhere, you know, you can't. A lot of cities will borrow, like Detroit, Michigan just borrowed a half a billion dollars to replace water mains. But, and the thing about it is, is you need to understand, we're not alone in this. Every community across the country is in the same spot. But each community, you know, they react in their own way. Because, you know, this isn't unique to us. I always felt it was best to put enough money in the projects fund to do what I needed to do on a five-year plan. There are many funding strings for infrastructure replacement, and a lot of the communities borrow money to do a big water and sewer project. But I always felt it was best to do some every year and pay as you go, because if you borrow the money, there's a cost of getting the money, and then the cost of paying it back. But if you pay as you go, a hundred percent of that money goes into the projects. So, because it takes, it takes a lawyer and it takes engineers just to get the money. And then you gotta pay the interest. So, and we're not trying to set a new world record here. Because, you know, we've just been doing this piece every year. But with all utilities, there's a cost of just the daily running of a utility, and the rates usually just cover this in most communities. And our utility has always put in enough in the budget to do the big-ticket items and replace or repair water or sewer mains. And I hope this will continue because it is imperative that you get the water to the customer and the sewage away from there. The superintendent of utilities of operations knows best what the utilities' needs are. And I will say it again, that the engineers help with the numbers for the projects, but they never give me ideas. It's all from me. They help me put a number to it so I can have a good budget number for our budget. Because, you know, they have a very large group of people that will help me do that. So when you receive the next budget, it is important that everybody be involved in it and look carefully at the funding for the projects. And we all know it comes down to rates. We all know that. But, you know, if, if the new superintendent and the engineers and Mike Wumpel can get an idea of, okay, this is what we need to put in the projects fund, let's just keep this coming every year, just like you put in for the power bill or stuff like that. You've all been voted in to or appointed as council members, which makes you stewards of the city. It's now your responsibility to make sure the utility department can still move forward. Okay, that's a given. The day of reckoning, this is, I guess this is, I've been doing this for thirty-five years, and I've seen a lot of stuff. But I put this in here. The day of reckoning is coming at you like a runaway freight train, and not just this community, but every community in industrialized world. Out in front of the water plant, you know, we had that catastrophic failure of that valve. And we lost water pressure over half the town. Those are the things that you can expect if, if you don't move forward with your infrastructure replacement. You're not gonna avoid it all because you got a hundred miles of water main sitting out there. And, but, you know, you gotta keep plugging away at it. So as I come to the end of my tenure, I would like to thank the council members, the mayor, past and present, for all the city provided me during my employment. It was always truly appreciated. And thanks to all my employees at the utilities, and all department heads and personnel throughout the city. I thank them all. I got a good bunch of guys out there. Two of them sitting over there. So I'd like to thank Mike Wumpel for your help, and Mayor Edger, and all the other, and then, then we got, bang. Thanks to Reggie and Jamie and, oh God, there's Mark. Old buddy Mark. So that's pretty much it.
I made your socks for you, Jack.
But I just, you know, I, working at the utilities meant a lot to me, and I always cared about it. I know I did. I'm responsible for these last thirteen years, but, you know, you get, I'm kinda passionate about what I do, so, you wanna do it right. But, so, that's it.
Thank you, Jack.
I won't be as windy as Jack was, but I do want, I do wanna take a few minutes to just kinda remember what Jack has been as a leader for the city's water and sewer department. I think he did a good job of summarizing some of it, but I wanna kinda emphasize the commitment that went with that fateful day in June that, I kinda forgot it was his birthday, probably good that I did, that the water treatment plant flooded. And, you know, our first responders are put into positions all the time where they have to make heroic efforts. But in this case, your city utility department, led by Jack Cosner, actually had to make a heroic effort. And that's something that this community is far better off for having had that happen. He's led his team quietly most of the time. He really doesn't enjoy coming to speak before you. That's very understandable. He spent countless hours reviewing the decisions that needed to be made at the existing water treatment plant. And then he was our technical leader on the new water treatment plant, making very good, informed choices throughout the entire process. And then, of course, he was very involved during construction. And then I think that one of the things he said towards the end that I wanna kinda emphasize to the council as well as the public, that Jack never lost sight of the need to recommend reliable, cost-effective improvements to your water and sewer system facilities. So most of all, I think Jack Cosner is a great example of how individuals in our community can actually improve our daily lives through their work. So thank you, Jack.
This is gonna be hard to follow there, isn't it?
Yeah.
I just wanna make a comment. I was on the city council when Jack was hired as superintendent. And I remember Mayor Tendy talking that he had the man that he wanted, but it was gonna take a while to talk him into it. Because Jack was a man of few words. I think that you learned how to do it more than a few words tonight. But I think the mayor picked the, the right person at the time. We all agreed, and that's why he worked doing what he did. But he just, he didn't do it just right on the spot. It took a while to talk him into it. Thank you, Jack.
Very good. Everybody else? All right, let's move on. Action Jacksonville. Good job. Committee reports tonight, Parks and Lakes, Alderman, Marge, Odenel.
Mr. Mayor, we have five items, and I'm gonna be asking for some help from some folks that are here tonight. Our first item is discuss amending the rental hours and fees at the community park center. I'll ask Kelly to speak to that.
I'll ask Skip to speak.
And I'll have Skip speak to that.
I thought it was gonna be a bathroom round.
All right.
How's that for a bathroom? It, it came to my attention through my employees, who I respect a lot. There was a lot of difference in, in their charges in how the community center is rented out, and it just became confusing all the time. So what we've decided to do is kinda put it all together into, it's not so confusing. So when you rent it out, we've got three times that we rent. Also, the senior citizens, senior group, they always have it Monday through Thursday up until five o'clock, I think, or four o'clock, something like that. So we changed that so it's not even, you can't even rent it until five o'clock in the afternoon during that, during those four days. So it's just a, we just kind of corrected a few things on there and made it a little bit easier on my office and, and a little bit easier for the people that wanted to rent it so they know what they're charging. So that's, that's where we're at with it. Kelly agreed, and we're going forward with some changes in the rates. It's not really costing a lot.
Anyone have any questions for Skip or?
To the senior center.
Yeah, they're, they've, we don't charge them. They just use it up until that point. The only, I think we have needed to have them get out a little early sometimes, but they don't usually have a problem with it. So we work with them pretty good. They get it agreed.
Okay, any other questions? The second item we have is discuss bidding bids and accepting the proposal for golf course building repairs. And Keith wasn't able to be here tonight, but he and I did have a chat. I know we also talked with Skip prior to. Based upon the golf committee that was put together a couple of years ago, there were a lot of suggestions, ma'am, how we could improve the golf course. And Keith and I have met several times, as well as I know he's met with the mayor and some others too. One of the priority items is really making the golf course more attractive, so when people show up and see things are actually happening and can get excited. So this is paint, and they're gonna be fixing some of the facade and putting up some different signage just to make it a more attractive place. So he did get a bid from Hawkins Pating in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-eight cents. That was a low bid. And if we approve it this evening, they can get started right away, to be able to see some improvements in the next couple of weeks.
What's the name of the company?
It's.
McGee Hawkins.
Mm-hmm. I think it was in your package.
Local company. So is that something that other, including companies in town gotta crack at too?
He did request several, and I know for sure that he got two people that are permanent. And it was a low bid of the two.
But we're not doing this. We're just waiting.
Yeah, we're not bidding.
We, we budgeted twenty thousand dollars for this activity.
Right. And so this is the beginning. We'll be coming forward with some additional requests in the coming weeks, if this is something that we wanted to get started. You know, if the weather's broke and we can get out there and get some things going and make it look sharper. Any other questions? The third item is discuss Jacksonville area baseball lease, and I will come over to Kelly.
Sure. I, I can touch on it. Andy, do you wanna talk about it a little bit?
Well, I mean, I think it's, it's kind of, yeah. They approached us a long, a couple of years ago. They've been back and forth. There, there's a dinner scheduled for Sunday to make an announcement, and it's out in the public. I talked about it this morning. Mac Murray Baseball is going to partner with the Pointe Colt folks. And redo the field, basically start from scratch up there. We, we touched on it at a meeting, a couple of meetings ago. It's a win for the city. You know, all we really had to do was extend the lease out. They wanted a little security, which we all agree that they need that because when you're starting from scratch. So they worked it out with Jacksonville Baseball, the Pointe Colt boys, and, and we just look forward to a good, long relationship with, with the vision of Mac Murray College, what they wanna do in, in local baseball. If you're interested in going to the announcement, it is on Sunday night at Hamilton's, and I can get you information on that. But Coach, our A.D., Athletic Director Justin Ford wasn't able to make it here tonight, but he gave me permission to just.
Move forward?
Yeah, it's really good. There'll be a lot more to come as far as specifics on the fields and things, but this is just to be to firm out that the city is committed with that. And else, Dan, did I cover that?
Okay.
Good job, Kelly.
Yeah, yeah. I'm Heather, the next one here. And number four is discuss partnership with Bob Crees and YMCA, and I know you have represented us from the YMCA here. And Kelly?
I will take this one.
Okay.
Over the winter, we've been talking about ways to promote the pool and try to do different things to get people out there and to get it used more. And, and this is kinda the quick version of what's been going on for quite a while out there. And I approached Mary Henry at the YMCA, and, and we had a couple of meetings and a couple of discussions. And, and we said, why can't we collaborate? And why can't we become partners and utilize our pool to, to a little bit greater extent? And Mary, I think, without speaking for her, she's with us tonight, but I think she was excited and. excited, and we kept talking about it a little bit, and we've actually proceeded to the point where we're working on an actual schedule and some programs for our pool. What we're talking about doing is utilizing a couple of programs in the mornings. We don't even open our pool till twelve-thirty, so we can be utilized at times while it's sitting idle right now. They, they are discussing some, some programs that they'd like to start, and we think it would be fantastic. It is not any cost to the city to, to do this program, this partnership. We're just trying, we're going to try it this year, see how it works out. We want to get more people out there, and this is an excellent way to get more people out there. We're also discussing working into our schedule, maybe some afternoon programs with some kids. They have wonderful directors that are experienced in this kind of stuff, and, and so the more we can utilize them, that's, that's fantastic. And maybe in the evening, our evenings are, we rent the pool quite a bit for parties and things of that nature, but we're really trying to work the schedule out. Lori and our committee, we met, and we've already discussed it with committee, and I think the committee was very supportive. So, we wanted, it's time, it's getting out into the public and everything, and we wanted to get this before you and hopefully get your support as well, moving forward with this partnership. And, and any questions, Mary and I would be glad to, to answer. Again, this is a pilot program. We hope to see how it works this year, and, but it's, it's getting moms and kids and people into the pool and that maybe otherwise wouldn't, wouldn't have visited our pool. So, I think it's, it could be a good thing for both of us.
What kind of program are we talking about? Swimming lessons?
Sure.
Yeah, we're going to offer swimming lessons Tuesday and Thursday mornings, we'd like to, at three different times. We'll also have, we have a wonderful water fitness class for adults that we'll have there, trying to do some water walking programs in the morning for arthritis patients who are getting wants to just walk in the pool. At two o'clock in the afternoon, we're going to try and do a fun activity, like a healthy exercise for the kids, whether it's a penny drop or diving or something, but also do water safety instruction into a few minutes of that for everyone. We're going to also have an Aqua Zuma class on Wednesday mornings. So, we're just trying to bring some, our swim team will practice there some, but the beauty of it is, when it's rainy or cold, we move it back to the Y, so we don't have to ever cancel a day. So, we're hoping we'll bring a whole new group of people out to park pool, and we're also going to work with all the daycares, trying to get them out there on a regular rotation in the afternoons, just to keep that pool full and busy.
Oh, good.
We're super excited about it. So, expect some support, recommendation tonight, and start implementing. Any other questions regarding that? And the fifth item we have is discuss rules and regulations for the golf carts at Lake Jacksonville, and I believe you all received a packet in your folder this evening. I'm sure Kelly can answer any questions that she might have regarding that.
Right, this, if I can, Lori. What we did, what you have in your packets, we already have rules and that type of thing for golf carts. That, we did that years ago, you know? We, we just, we elaborated on them a little bit, and then I put this in a pamphlet form that, that's a little easier to read than just like reading an ordinance book, you know, and tried to explain some things in this. And after tonight, with, with your support, I'm going to take this and make a three-fold brochure out of it. So, we have, when someone registers a card at, at the concession stand, we have brochures that we can hand to them and say, this is exactly what, you know, what we're doing, what we expect, and so on. So, we're not recreating the rules, we just, we just are putting them in a spot under Parks and Lakes where they should be, where we can enforce them, and, and then making a brochure with, with this information that's in front of you here tonight.
How's that been going? How, how has the rule been followed, do you think, since?
Well, I think they, they've been okay, Tony, but we're going to have a lot more usage once we get this trail completed. So, I don't want to wait until the last minute. I've got to get signs ordered, we've got to get preparation done before the trail is actually completed. So, I, I want to have everything in order before that actually happens, because it'll, it'll happen this summer, we'll have it, you know, completed, and, and I, I want to be able to have everything ready to go.
I actually have three questions about the ordinance. One might require attorney gear, but on the specifications, on the kind of models allowed? So, you listed some specific companies and specific model numbers? So, if Easy Go changes the CCs next year, or if they get bigger, smaller, would that be a problem for you, or is it the first?
Well, I tell you what, Steve, where this came from, I didn't just pull this out of the air, I made an appointment and went down and talked with the boys down at Rex Battery. You know, they deal with these all the time. And that, this was actually some of their recommendations, the most common models, the most common CCs and, and everything else. They said ninety-five percent of the golf carts you're going to see are going to be under these specific categories. And, and if they're souped up, hopped up, whatever, we don't want something down there running fifty mile an hour down our golf path, you know? So, these recommendations came from them, and, and I was appreciative of that.
So, if something changes in the future, we can take a look at it, because this is a resolution form instead of an ordinance on one reading, we can make an adjustment to this.
Yeah, anything's always changeable, you know? If we find that we want to, that we have an issue we need to address, you know, we can always, we can always address something that comes up.
I guess the important thing that I know in the minutes is that the main thing is the speed limit and court power restrictions and the exact model numbers aren't the... Aren't good, correct. Right. So, as long as that could, yeah, I, is that how we just did an ordinance review? And one part of that thing was to say, a lot of specifications would be administered instead of laid out by the city council. So, just want to make sure we're not... No, I think you're still okay. Okay. Then the second question I have was concerning the, um, you having open alcohol in the golf cart. So, Chief, not for his next one, is he?
Yeah.
Oh, he's hyped. Okay. So, the question I have is, it says you can't have open alcohols during, during operation. So, what happens if you find someone and they pull over, and then they're not operating, they're like next to the trail, and they have open alcohol? Is that too specific that you can't kick them out of the lake?
I don't know what you're asking. Are you asking if they're parked and we don't actually see them operating the golf cart?
Right, they're operating the golf cart and have open alcohol. And later on, you like, whoever's doing enforcement comes back, and they're on the side of the path, and they still have, they have open alcohol. And then it's like, well, I didn't have open alcohol when I was operating, I have open alcohol on the side. Is that kind of like the way you go weasel out of getting kicked out, or is that too specific?
Probably too specific. That's going to be at the discretion of the officer at that point. More to it than just, are they standing there drinking? Or are they causing a problem? Are they outside with ramifications of the lake rules, et cetera, et cetera? But as far as operating with open alcohol, that, that would be enforced just like we would anything else.
Okay.
But it's kind of too specific. You'd have to actually take it event by event. Obviously, if they're driving down the path drinking, that's an easy one for us.
Right.
If they're parked along the way, and somebody's having a beer, it's going to be at the discretion of the officer of what that circumstance at that point is.
Okay, and I guess we were trying to get, we're trying to limit the discretion, that we're trying to say that the trail is not a place to be drinking and driving. So, that was one concern I had. So, you think it's still enforceable?
I think it would just be along the lines of the lake rules.
You know, Alderman Cookie, or Big Chief for many years, do you have any opinions on that?
Well, I have to agree with Adam. It's going to be, it's going to be a real test one call here, because first off, you're going to have to see them doing it. And I mean, if you've got a golf cart standing there, maybe they'd be their golf cart, and then you'd be standing there having a beer.
And I guess my question is, do you want to completely ban alcohol on the trail of any kind? That's, that may... Well, I mean, I guess if someone's walking, I, I don't know, but if someone's... Yeah, that's the question. If you get much more specific than this, that you can't be standing beside your golf cart with a beer or sitting in your golf cart with a beer and not operate, then you're really getting to the point where you're not allowing alcohol on the trail at all, which would then have to apply to any campers or hikers or whatever else. So, what do you do with alcohol, like open, drinking alcohol in the lake? Does it have to be on the campsite, or can it just be anywhere? Anywhere, I believe. I don't think there's any restrictions on that.
Yeah, we don't, generally have much problem with that, and, you know...
If it gets to be a problem, I don't stick another one.
Yeah. You know, and I think the biggest one is going to be intoxicated or driving. It's sort of a common, most of the things that you really want to emphasize and emphasize, not standing beside your golf cart having a beer.
Yeah, I guess what, it would be good that they had the city council come forward and it'd be good to have the council say, it's like, this isn't, this is a place for everyone, not for people on golf carts drinking. So, that's why I'm just trying to make sure that we're agreeing to that.
So, are we prohibiting alcohol on the golf trail? I mean, on the, is that what you're asking?
No, I'm not going for that. I'm just going like they can't be having alcohol on golf carts as it's going along.
Open container.
Right. And I'm trying to make sure there's no, like, you know, lawyerly speak, sorry, Dan, to say that you can get out of it. Like, oh, I'm not operating, I'm just standing next to the trail, even though you saw me earlier driving on the trail, and now I'm standing next to it.
Steve, I know one of the things you mentioned during our meeting that I'm not seeing here, and I can't remember where that discussion went regarding the prioritization of who has the right of way on the trail.
Uh, that was, my next question is...
Is it?
Yes.
It's in there.
Pedestrians and bicycles and...
All right, I read it.
The pedestrian product is allowed to ride right away at all times.
Okay, so we're good. Well, Steve and Russ, are you going to give a, we can have a press meeting tonight? And you can...
No, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with the first two, as long as everyone's fine and kind of like have, all have the same agreement.
It's just a resolution.
That's one, sorry, forgot about that. Well, yeah, and, and then number four on the general rules, it says watch for children, and later it says the pedestrians and bicycles have the right of way. So, should we change watch four to yield two? Would that be better instead of having it be one or the other?
Well, I tried to make these read like common sense, you know, like easy to read and, and not like reading a rulebook, you know? So, there's some easier language in there that you'll find, because this is going to be a pamphlet that we hand out. So, I don't want it to read like a, like a dictionary, you know? So, that's why some of the language is worded the way it is. It's just flexible.
So, saying watch four, then yield two, or right away later is okay? The way it's written, pedestrians and bicycles are allowed to trot the trail right away at all times. We can change that to, shall have the right of way at all times. And what do you think would be? And I think there's, that's something that most trails, they have a priority, where it's people on feet first and people on bicycle first, and this is for adding the carts. You're, you're handling that, or it's signage, everything, so.
However you want to do it, I, I thought it's covered, but where, however you want to do it.
Steve, do you feel more comfortable with the suggestion that Dan offered? Do you think that makes it more clear because we make that? Are you good with that?
Yeah.
I'll get it from Dan.
Okay. Okay. Any other, any other questions for Kelly regarding the golf cart policy?
So, what was that? Pedestrians. That paragraph, the last sentence, pedestrians and bicycles shall have the right of way at all times. So, change it hard, shall?
Yes.
Or do we need to amend that later, or is it just? No, we'll just change that now.
It's a change.
So, now it'll be read in that thing. Okay.
I clearly noted about your concern regarding the, the first stop point under general rules and regulations, and I think it's something that Adam and, and, Adam and Kelly can bring to our attention if we need to adjust it, and it says that under, on the first page, management reserves the right to amend these rules and regulations at any time, so you can always come back and make those adjustments. So, that's all we have tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Planning and public works, Alderman, Mr. Bill Scott.
Mr. Mayor, we have two items. The first item is to discuss waiting bids and accepting proposal for lawn spraying, and that's for the downtown spraying, and I'll hand that over to Cherry.
And I'd like to just defer to Jack, because he did such a good job. This is the most I've ever heard you talk about, spending my whole time I've been in the Alderman, or I've been here.
When you see white flags, stay off the grass.
Uh, I contacted five different companies for five springs of the grass areas all through the downtown over to the north by the railroad tracks, and then spraying for beetles whenever they come out, and I got back five different proposals, and a little proposal was from Sands Mowing here in Jacksonville, and it was for three thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars. And if we pay it in one month sum right at the beginning, it'll knock it down to three thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. And he's the one that's been doing it last, during the last four or five years, so I'm very comfortable with them.
Any questions?
It's like Jack said, when the flags are upstairs.
There you go. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
The second item is to discuss TIF application, and Mr. Kelly, are you interested in that?
Sure. I have an, an application received in our office from a, Mr. Ed Killam. And I don't know if Mr. Killam is with us tonight. Is Mr. Killam here? Okay. We tried to contact him today, I just wasn't sure if he was going to show or not. This is a pretty straightforward project, so I doubt you'll have any questions. Mr. Killam owns the Antiquarius, is that right, building on the corner of the plaza? It's nineteen South Central. He would like to put a new roof on that building. As you know, that building is in excellent condition, and it's, it's one of our nicer buildings downtown, and, and we certainly would like to help him keep it that way. The roof for the total project is twenty-three thousand three eighty, or three forty-eight, and during our TIF review committee meeting, it was suggested that we do fifty percent of the eligible cost or a maximum of eleven thousand six seventy-four. Okay? Any questions I can answer? We would like to move forward and help Mr. Killam with these buildings.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Bill. Utility owner in Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I have one item tonight. Before we get to that, I'd like to, on behalf of myself and the utility committee, you know, we have a lot of different superintendents throughout the city, and one of the more important ones, I think, is Jack Cosner's job, and I think he's done a very good job. I don't think I've ever worked with anybody as passionate as Jack. I mean, he, that's his baby. He takes care of the, the daily activities like it's his own, and I just want to thank Jack for personally taking care of all of us and the whole city, because a lot of people just go to work and do their job and go home. Jack, I'll do that. Jack takes it personally, and since there are a lot of meetings with him and on behalf of mayor and the guys at the venue, just thanks, Jack. We can't, we can't say enough or do, do enough for Jack as he goes on and retires and travels around in his camper or does whatever he wants to do. But hopefully he'll respond to some phone calls or texts if we... And thank goodness, you know, we do have Valen down here to carry on some transitioning with Rick and the guys down there. I think, hopefully, Jack's leaving us in good hands, and Rick and the guys got some big shoes to fill, so, thanks, Jack.
Number one, discuss bids for sale of surplus vehicles. Basically, these are vehicles that weren't worthy of a trade-in when we got ready to purchase new. You guys got a list of them in your email. We'll put them out for bids, people bid on them, and that's what we receive in your email. Any questions?
Any public comment at this time? Before we go to the next meeting, everybody, please give this, this cake. This is the gift we give Jack. It's not just for cake and punch, but obviously it's for Jack, it's for Bill leaving, it's for our newly elected Alderman, Brandon and Aaron, just to welcome them, and make sure you have a piece of cake and get some punch. It'll be available after...
It'll be available after the regular meeting, too, but if you want to partake right now, feel free, and I know it says no food and drink in there, but go ahead. Terry, I'm sorry.
He's got his names at the bottom of the chair.
But thank you.
Alrighty.
He motioned.
Uh, no, no, this is good. Thanks to our.